All right, I do have 6:30. We'll go ahead and convene this meeting for September 3rd. I would like to welcome everyone here and ask that you would join us in the pledge, if you will, followed by an invocation.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Gracious and loving God, we thank you for this day. Lord, we thank you for the county that we're allowed to live in. Lord, we thank you for our citizens. We just pray for hope for them, for all that happens and all that we do. And Lord, we pray for those that are in the harms way in this terrible storm that's headed towards the coast. Lord, we just pray for their safety. Lord, for this county and all that we do and all that we take on. These things we ask in Holy Name, Christ's sake, amen.
Amen.
Do have one subtraction on the agenda tonight. Item two, under general business. It's not ready for business tonight, so take that one off. Would ask that we do, we are going into closed session under legal, and I believe it would be to add personnel, which is that's six. Court is so inclined to do that. That's all I have at this time.
I most approve.
Second? Motion and second to approve the agenda as amended. All in favor, make it known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No? Right, at this time, we are to item A, public comments on agenda items. If there's anyone here would like to address this board on any agenda items, related items, now would be the time to come and do so. We have this podium here with the mic, or you can use the mic stand there.
mic stand there. There's a three-minute timeframe. If anyone would like to come at this time on any of the agenda items. Seeing no movement, we'll move along to item B, general business. We have Karen here tonight from our finance office and a couple of items.
Good afternoon.
Welcome.
Thank you. Appreciate y'all having me tonight. I have a couple of things to discuss before you tonight. The first one is an agreement, a letter of engagement with Sidney Marshburn. This is stemming from, we received a letter, as well as everybody across the state, on June the 12th, from the State Treasurer's Office, talking about governmental accounting standards in the Yellow Book audit. And one of the things that they were highly recommending is that auditors do not perform any non-audit-ing services for their governmental clients. What that means for us is our auditors have always prepared our financial statements as well as performing our audit. So, our auditors were here about two weeks after I received this, and we discussed it in great detail at that time. And since that time, we have been in contact with a couple of CPA firms that focus on governmental accounting. And the one that I chose to present to you all tonight is this Sidney Marshburn. And as you can see, her rate will be at $50 an hour, unless otherwise agreed upon in writing. And based upon the timeframe that we're talking about, it will probably take six to eight hours around the late, the end of October 1st of November. And since this is something new that the state's added on to everyone, more than likely, our audit won't be turned in until like mid-late November. So, I would like to request the board to approve moving forward with engagement with Sidney Marshburn, to be able to accomplish what the State Treasurer's Office is requesting.
Hey, we're being asked to, well, kind of dictated by the state to do this. They're wanting kind of a clearer separation between the roles that we used to get from one entity, now from two.
Correct.
Financial statements are.
They never offered to pay for it either, did they?
Well, of course not.
Is our audit fee gonna go down as a result of this?
Not to my knowledge, because they are still going to prepare our financial statements. This is just another level of oversight, of reviewing the financial statements, which is something that myself and the county manager has done in the past. And we will still do that now, but this is just another level of oversight. Once we know how much time she's spending, at that time, I'll come back before you all with money.
And then this is based on a rate of $50 an hour?
Huh.
And I wouldn't think that it would require a huge number of hours, since basically someone else is kind of preparing them as well, so.
Yes, and our audit firms, they estimated between six to eight hours.
Any other questions?
We're looking at roughly, how much, 35?
100.
Between, at least $400. It depends on how many hours.
And what are you guessing it's, the total bill's gonna be? Do you know, or?
Not yet, because this is something brand new. Our auditors did suggest that between six and eight hours of time. So, and she charges $50 an hour, so.
Which is 300 to 400 dollars.
Right.
Based on that estimation.
Right.
That includes they charge for travel time also.
We talked about if, if I felt like she needed to come here, and she's coming from Marshall, North Carolina, and my original thought process was no, we didn't necessarily need her to physically come here. She's gonna have access to all of our data by the way of our auditors. And, you know, if we need to do, you know, like a FaceTime or a Skype call, we could do something like that to cut down on the travel time. So, no, this does not include any travel.
Did we have this in the budget to do this, or is it gonna have to be an amendment?
Depending upon the amount, it may have to be a small amendment. You know, if it only comes out to $150, then by no means am I gonna come and ask you all for a $150 budget amendment. So, it's gonna just depend on how much it's gonna be.
And that money would come out of the general fund, or?
Yes.
Or the contingency.
Yes, it would come out of the contingency that we've already set aside for budget amendments.
One of those two funds.
Contingency is in the general fund, so it's still gonna be general fund monies.
Any other questions?
What's this, Part II, your, $3,500 exclusive expenses?
That's my next.
Okay.
Next conversation.
My head.
That's okay.
Sorry about that.
I, I would make a motion that we approve the consulting agreement with a provision that it not exceed $500 without permission of the board.
Motion to approve for a maximum of 500. Limit or future consideration of the board. A second. Any further discussion? All in favor of that, make it known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No? Now, Bill.
Okay, and I'll let Ms. Marsh, Marshburn know that. Just realize that may delay our audit a little bit if it falls, doesn't fall right on a commissioners' meeting and it was to run over 500. So, the next thing that I have before you tonight is a consulting service agreement between Allegheny County and MGT of American Consulting. This is an agreement that we've had in place for probably 12, 13, 14 years with the same firm. And what this is, is for our indirect cost that primarily affects social services and transportation, we receive a portion of our indirect cost for those two departments back through our state reimbursements. If y'all recall back to our budget meeting, there was like a $300 and some thousand dollar revenue. It was indirect cost for social services. This plan right here is what allows us to get that reimbursement back. And it is to the tune of $3,500, which has been the price for many, many years. And this is, the only change that we're gonna have is they're changing the person that is doing our indirect cost plan.
Will we spend 3,500 and get 300,000 back?
Pretty close, yes.
Motion to approve.
Good trade.
This is, motion to approve as requested, and a second, and question is, this is in the budget?
Yes. This is actually in social services budget, already budgeted.
Any other questions? All in favor of that, make it known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No? Five oh.
Thank you.
Thank you. And if you don't mind, we got, when we get to the consent agenda, if anybody has any questions on those.
I'll stick around.
Thank you, Karen. All right, next item is the 2020 Census Complete Count Resolution. Met with a gentleman last week. Basically, we want to try to put together a focused effort so that we can find all of our citizens and, and account for them, because it is, equates to dollars received, eating federal monies coming in. And that's, this resolution is just talking about that complete count meeting for the county. And after we adopt this, if the board is so inclined, we will try to form a committee across several different lines of folks within the county to try to help with that organization or that effort. Questions?
No.
Be a motion to consider this?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the complete count resolution. All in favor, make it known by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No? Five oh. Also have in our packet, a resolution. It came to us, I think from the council of governments had circulated this among the affected folks, basically via, on the right, yeah, trying to help with our, our health funding, mental health funding. And they would like for us to adopt this resolution to hopefully get some help in Raleigh to funding and the way they receive funds. Questions?
Have none.
Be a motion for consideration.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve. All in favor, make it known by saying aye.
Aye.
There's no? And the last item here, the required transportation agreement required by the state statute, and it actually addresses the statutes in it. This was written by, it presented, we adjusted it a little bit, and the copy you actually have in your packet has not been amended on the signature line above Sheriff Brian Mainz. It should say Allegheny County Sheriff. And the document that I have in my folder here has that changed. Other than that, it should suffice for what's required.
Final document that we signed, that you signed, we'll have that on there, I take it.
Yeah.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the transportation agreement. All in favor, make it known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No? Five oh. All right, next, we have a couple of items on our consent agenda. These are pertaining, pertaining to our transportation fund. They were going through, trying to finish up things, get ready for the audit. They discovered a shortfall and went back through, and it started out a little larger than that. In order to reconcile that account, we need to do a transfer of funds.
I have no questions, Mr. Chairman.
There be a motion on that consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, make it known by saying aye.
Aye.
There's no? Five oh. All right, we are to item D, public comments. Anyone here would like to address this board on any matters? Now would be a time to come and let us know who y'all and what you're thinking on.
Council meeting being at the same time. This coming Saturday.
Listen, for some reason, that mic is not coming through here. If you don't mind using that one, sorry about that.
It's okay.
We're, we're working on it.
That's better.
That's better. Thank you all very much for allowing me to be here. This coming Saturday, September the 7th, is our second annual litter sweep. It is held by All Up. And we gathered last spring, there were 69 bags of trash, plus items that would not fit, that were able to be gathered. We will be meeting Saturday morning at Miles Realty Office, which is located between the campire, the Japanese restaurant, and the subway. Hopefully, lots of people will come from all ages. We will have places for little people that can pick up, like at Kraus Park, at the Veterans Park, or people who cannot agilely pick up along the roadside. We would like for everyone to come, clubs, individuals, please. And we're hoping that we'll have a good turnout so that we can do this. We want to have the date of the 7th with a backup date being the 14th. The reason for this is so that we can have our roadsides cleaned up by the 21st, when we have our Heritage Festival. We have such a beautiful area, and we want to show it off in the very best way we can. Thank you for allowing the time, and I hope to see you guys there helping pick up trash. I know I've seen some of you there before in the past, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing no movement, we'll go ahead and close that section and move along to interim county manager comments. First item on there is Sparks Hill Road, and I think we have a few residents who live there. That's what they're doing here. They have, some of them have reached out to me, and full disclosure, I do have a son that lives on this road too, so just for the public's knowledge. I went over, took some pictures, and it's pretty sad shape. Hey, I think, as my understanding, they turned in some paperwork, hoping to get some help from the state. And talked to Randall Miles in Elkin last week, and basically, it's a private road, and we have no resources or no way to come in and do anything with the road, the way it is. So, and of course, this board doesn't have any, we don't do roads either. So, we not, I hate it the way it is. I don't know what the answer is. I've tried to do everything I can to make your voices heard and to talk to the state as well, and the highway department. So, I'm, fortunately, there's not a lot that we can do other than that. They're aware of it, but their hands are kind of tied as to the way the road is set up and property owners. Doesn't make your problem go away. However, how many of you live on that road? Had a good organization and a good start. I think if you would bring your energy together and try to figure out among you a way to pool your efforts. I understand there's been some challenges at the end of the road. Think the upper end of the road where Allen lives is, is the best part of the road. The biggest challenge is whenever you start over the hill down the other side, all the water is just running right down through there. So, don't really know if there's anything that we can do. And like I said, I did try to reach out to Randall at Elkin, out of the Elkin office. I think that's where you'd said you'd submitted paperwork and signatures. I'm not sure to what degree. I never did see any of that. But unfortunately, I didn't get a lot of help out of him. I did have the conversation to try to make your voices heard. Other than that, I, I really don't know what we can do, help in the matter, which we could. Beyond that. Next item is road sign update. And on the end of the table down here, we had talked about in our budget, budgeting some monies for the challenge that we're having with the roadside, or the road signs getting gone. And those are the three different materials that we're using for roads. That's the one we started out with. That's the next upgrade. And that last sign is what we're currently using. Wendy says we've been using that for about six months now, with pretty good success.
A little better.
It is. And I just wanted to bring that to the board's attention, because I know we'd had some concerns, and we hear a lot about those, that there has been a change made on that, and that's been, so far, positive. And she had already presented her budget, that type of material, so I think we actually have extra budgeted.
Mr. Chairman, my concern is not with the material. It's whether they're fixed. Make them too easy for people to pop them up. See us continue paying money on any material. That easy to.
Well, but the reason they were easy to pop up is because of the material of the sign. They were fastened at the bottom. The sign was just ripping out, whereas these heavier signs are not ripping. That's what I understand. So, that's.
To see us go on a trial and put it in those areas where there's been most vulnerable. That's how it works.
Now, that's, we, we replace signs every day. I think Gley Creek is probably one of the ones that's doing a lot of the sign replacements. And I don't. the ones that's doing a lot of the sign replacements, and I don't know, David, could you speak to the difference in the sign, in anything you're seeing?
You first. The last sign you had, it's a good sign, it holds up, it does a good job.
We'll monitor the feedback on that and see areas that's been, been losing them a lot in, and see what's, if that makes any difference. But the feedback I've gotten right now is, it's better, so.
It's also the way that it's hooked on to the post, that has a lot to do with it, doesn't it? How easy it is for them to steal the signs?
Yeah, I'd say it would be, I mean, but I think it's kind of clamped on to the post, in the bracket.
What's the fine for stealing a county sign? Didn't we have a fine in there?
It was enforced for a while, there were several people charged, paid the cost of replacing it.
Was that a county ordinance? I think it was the state.
I think it's the state statute.
If they're caught with a stolen sign, they have to pay the cost of replacing it, is there any additional fine that can be added to it?
Well, I mean, it's whatever a judge decides to impose, generally, there's court costs plus the restitution of the sign, and court cost runs around $200.
That maybe, maybe have helped with some, some of the deterrent as well, I don't know, but I did want to, want the board to see kind of the change that had been made there. The third item is bidding policy, we do have a purchasing bidding policy, I would like to look at that in light of some of the recent challenges we've had, with the board's permission, and maybe look at, you know, we, we have statutes, but we can go beyond statutes, and I think, I think we should really consider having a policy that, in general, we would bid anything, whether it's a service or not. Of course, independent on the amount, there are some statutes that allow us, because of the size of our community, times it's challenging for us to get the required number of bids in some areas, but if the board's okay, I would like to spend a little time in the future, kind of looking at that, and working with Donna Summ on some of the challenges we've had, and just bring back a recommendation at some point in the future.
With one thing in, if we enter into any contracts, I've asked before, and I'd ask again, that there be a clause in there, that if we have to go to court, who we going to court against should be responsible for our attorney fees, if we, if we're...
If we prevail.
In our, if it's found in our favor. That's in a lot of contracts, are recovering attorney fees.
Yeah.
That's money that belongs to the citizens of the county. I think we need to have a contract that protects them as, as much as possible, and going through this several times, personally, I know that it, that makes a difference in, in how lawsuits are brought.
Don't we have liability insurance that would cover the attorney fees in that situation?
It's on the situation.
Any other comments?
Could we put a clause for remediation, deation?
Stuff you need to...
Well, I mean, if it's over a certain dollar amount, and it's brought in civil superior court, there's mandatory mediation anyway.
Okay. I think the circumstances... Some of that. Anyway, I would like to pursue that a little bit more, and kind of, that's an area of opportunity we could...
I do.
And moving along to item F, county commissioner comments, I'll start to my far left, Commissioner John Irvin.
On the advice of legal and religious counsel, I decline.
Commissioner Larry Prince.
No comments.
I'm here.
Just a few things for reminder, I would still like to see a commissioner workday. With this time of year coming on, I think possibly, maybe a three-hour, four-hour nighttime meeting, people are harvesting corn and hay and tobacco right now, so I think it would, if we could have a commissioner workday, try to have it late in the evening. Also, would like for us to move forward with the tour of the fairgrounds, especially before the big farm day that comes into this month. I think Karen was preparing a breakdown of what it costs to, to run the fairgrounds. Also, I'm still, still anxious to see from Josh Green, the cost of a baseball and softball field would be at the Davis Field, adding one or two more fields. We need, if we're going to do anything, we need to be moving on that fairly fast, so.
Speaking of fairgrounds, I came through there today, and I believe it needs some attention out there, there's some wet spots out there, even hit the highway, the ground is still dark, and that's going to be tough conditions to try to hold a rodeo, but I think, you know, tractor and blade out there, there's ocean wave in places water's been standing, but I think I could get there and stir that around a little bit, and cram that thing out. Lot better.
At this time, we are being asked to go into closed session pursuant to General Statute 143318.11, A3 legal, and six personnel would entertain a motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, make it no, may say an aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Five oh. Thank you.
The road's just in a no win situation down there, ain't it?
There they are.
Yeah, that's why we have divisions.
Remote disagreements.
Ready, Charlie?
Action.
All right, we are at this time back from closed session. A couple of items for, to take up for business. The first one, we are going to, we talked about giving our attorney the, try to go to pursue co-counsel for pending litigation and get back with us on estimate of what that would cost. Further discussion on that? Set that on the.
Make a motion that we authorize the county attorney to approach co-counsel.
Any further discussion? All in favor of that, make it known by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, no? Five oh. The second item was interim manager compensation, we discussed.
Make a motion that we compensate Mark as interim manager at the hour that the previous county manager put it out at.
Second. I would probably want to recuse myself from that.
Yes, I would think so.
When would you like for that to, to be, take effect?
In that job.
I started on the 23rd day of July.
Effective 23 July? Yeah, yeah, I agree.
Other comments, questions? All in favor of that, make it known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Four oh. Any further? Business?
No, I'm going to adjourn.
Second. And then a second to adjourn, all in favor, make it known by saying aye.
Aye.
There's no, five oh. Thank you, gentlemen.